Good evening, citizens of Portsmouth. My colleagues on council, Mr. City Manager, Madam City Attorney, and Madam Clerk. I want to welcome also our city staff to our public work session today. And I would ask that my colleagues now please note your attendance electronically.
Seven members of City Council present.
Thank you, ma'am. And now I will turn the meeting over to our City Manager, Mr. Carter. Sir, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council. Great to be with you this evening. It's been a little while since we've come together. We did have a second presentation that we're going to do this evening, but Ms. Neal had some personal issues, was not able to make it. And because of the nature of that, we thought it would be important for her to make that presentation herself. So we're going to move that until the next work session. So expect the legislative agenda to come before the next work session. I looked at the kind of timeline of things that need to be done, and that will still fit the timeline to get everything done in time. But we are very fortunate, and I'm pleased to have with us tonight someone that's going to help us move the agenda along with the Minority and Women's Business Enterprise Policy and Procedures Manual. That is a result of our, I guess, when we start talking about disparities, we've had that study done, so now we have some data to kind of help us move this process along. And that's really important in the process. I am pleased to have with us tonight Ms. Vanetta Mitchell. Ms. Vanetta Mitchell is a seasoned expert in minority women and small business enterprise programs with extensive experience in both quantitative and quantitative data collection, analysis, and evaluation and creation of policies and programs. As the principal consultant of Mitchell Consulting Group, she brings a wealth of knowledge in contract compliance, program management, with a distinguished track record of designing and performing disparity studies for federal, state, and local clients across the country. Mrs. Mitchell's deep expertise in procurement processes, including construction management at risk, qualification-based solicitations like RFPs and RFQs, enable her to creatively expand opportunities for socially and economically disadvantaged firms. Her broad expertise includes managing over 30 disparity studies, evaluating and implementing supplier diversity programs for cities, counties, and school districts, and administering MWSBE programs in both the public and the private sectors. In addition to her industry expertise, Ms. Mitchell excels in project management, project scheduling, analytical reporting facilitation, and public relationships. Her leadership and dedication are further exemplified by her service as a U.S. Air Force Veteran. Thank you for your service, where she developed a commitment to integrity and results-driven mindset. I present to you this evening, Ms. Vanetta Mitchell. Ms. Mitchell?
Good afternoon, Mayor Glover, City Council, Manager Carter, Ms. White. It is a pleasure to be before you again this afternoon. I am really excited to get to this point where we have worked through procedures and processes that would move the needle and level the playing field for minority women-owned businesses in your region. And so this afternoon, what I'd like to do is walk you through highlights of the policy, try not to bore you too much with the intricate details, but definitely inform you and get your engagement on the policy as it has been drafted and prepared for the city for its So the MWEBE program is designed to elevate economic growth. If you recall from the disparity study, we conducted an economic impact analysis to really understand if minority women-owned businesses were to grow, win contracts, subcontracts, et cetera, what would be that economic impact to the city? Jobs, wages, taxes back to the city, et cetera. So these programs are really designed and thought about as economic engines to the city of Portsmouth, and that's how we are thinking about and how we're moving forward with the proposed policy for the city. I want to begin with the policy statement itself. The city, it is the policy of the city to use race and gender neutral as well as race and gender conscious measures to enhance the participation of minority women-owned businesses in all city procurement opportunities. And that word "all" is extremely important as we think through the processes and the way that the city procures goods and services. How do we engage minority women-owned businesses to participate in all city contracting? The program is also, excuse me, the statement also is to provide MWEBE firms a level playing field to participate, prohibit discrimination against any person or business in pursuit of those opportunities regardless of the race, religion, sex, national origin, age, disability, or service-disabled status. It also, the policy also, is conducted in procurement and contracting programs so as to prevent any discrimination that is prohibited by state and federal laws. Promote economic growth, promote existing MWEBE growth and profitability in the 16 counties which make up the city of Portsmouth Metropolitan, excuse me, well, let me back that up. The 16 counties that make up your relevant geographic market area, and the last time I presented before you, I kind of outlined what that relevant geographic market area looks like. Those are the firms, the firms located in those 16 counties are the ones that the program is designed to really target. Make sure that they're aware of the contracting opportunities, assist with any type of professional development, business development, scaling their businesses, bonding, all of those aspects of growing, managing and growing a business. In also promoting the economic growth, the policy and the procedures will monitor, evaluate, and report on participation and the compliance of the procedures that are outlined and that we'll talk about today. Promote the city's economic development initiatives by including the utilization of minority women-owned businesses, like I said, in the metropolitan statistical area or your relevant geographic market area. Just a reminder of the citywide aspirational goals, goals calculated based on your utilization from the disparity study, the 2022 disparity study, and the availability of firms in the relevant geographic market area. And these aspirational goals we discussed, we discussed last time, they are just targets that you're trying to achieve. So the manual is designed to make sure that any and everything that the city procures, that there's a thought and it's intentional to invite MWEBE firms to also bid on those contracts. And the goal is for anything and everything that you procure, that MWEBE firms have an opportunity to compete, and as they're successful in that competition and potentially win contracts and purchases, the city would achieve these goals. Okay. So I want to start talking about how the manual is designed to achieve the intentional solicitation and inclusion and engagement of MWEBE firms. So the city's procurement policy has three different sections that we'll walk through and then kind of, again, talk about how MWEBE firms engage in those different opportunities. So one is the small purchases. These are small purchases up to $5,000. Someone in the various departments has that purchasing ability to go and procure something for its department. So up to $5,000, the process is to at least solicit one quote from an MWEBE firm. For $5,001, up to $50,000, the procurement policy states that the city must acquire at least three quotes. So the manual instructs that at least one of those quotes, again, are from MWEBE firms, and of course, firms that are available that sell the type of goods and services that that procurement is. From $50,001 up to $100,000, advertisement is required, and then the city would actually outreach to as many MWEBE firms that sell that good or service in that particular field. The other item that I want to point out is, it is going to be very important to understand the success of the program by documenting the efforts. So the purchaser of that good or service would actually document their outreach. What MWEBE firms did they reach out to, and what was the disposition of that outreach? Did the firm turn it down? Did the firm bid, but they weren't the lowest price, so we selected the lowest responsible responsive bidder? That engagement is extremely important because it helps the city to understand where are the gaps or the shortfalls between non-MWEBE firms who are successful versus MWEBE firms, and how can we help them be more competitive in the marketplace? And then also, the purchaser would be responsible for seeking the assistance of the MWEBE office, which I understand that you are in the process of trying to establish right now to identify and find, seek out, MWEBE firms to bid on the various solicitations. For formal contracts, P procurement cards and competitive contracts, I'm sorry. If the contract, or cooperative contracts, excuse me, if the contract is greater than $100,000, again, advertisement is required and outreach to MWEBE firms is required. For P card users, they should make every effort to try to identify if there are MWEBE firms in your database that sell whatever it is. And, you know, it is very well-known that most of the P card expenditures are, you know, payment for conferences, or travel, or lodging of those nature, but sometimes there's an opportunity to buy T-shirts for a special outing or a special event that the city is going to have. Then is there an MWEBE firm who can provide a quote for that even though you are using the P card? Cooperative contracts are a little bit different, and public agencies across the country always utilize cooperative contracts because they save taxpayers' dollars. So the intent here is to make every effort that if there are MWEBE firms identified in the cooperative contracts, to provide them that opportunity to compete as well. What I have seen over the years is that some agencies will say, oh, that's a cooperative contract, so, you know, we're not going to even do any outreach. But there are some MWEBE firms in various cooperative contracts, and then part of the business development for MWEBE firms in your relevant geographic is to help them understand and coach them on how to be a cooperative contract vendor through state contract, et The staff responsibility is still the same. Document the outreach, seek assistance from the MWEBE office, and then make sure that they adhere to the solicitation requirements that's outlined in your purchasing manual. There is an element to the program that also is very helpful for increased minority women-owned business participation, and that's really around small business participation. Couple of things that need to be done prior to this, and it takes some time to really stand up any type of program, but particularly for this SBE program, there has to be some further dialogue and conversation about what you want that to look like. I know that local participation is very important to the city council, and so can the SBE program be that venue for that local participation that we target businesses in our own city to actually go after or actually bid on different contracts? So what we want to do is develop criteria for SBE certification. How do you identify those firms? And as we talked about previously, SBE is any small business regardless of race or gender. So you will have your businesses in the area who are small, whoever meet that criteria, who would have that opportunity to compete. The caveat to a small business that is quite successful in many places is that you can actually target specific solicitations for just small businesses to compete. It's race and gender neutral. And so if it's a $49,000 contract, and you have 10 small businesses who sell that good or service, you could isolate or target that particular solicitation and just have your 10 SBE firms bid on that particular solicitation or contract. And it's very successful other places across the country if designed correctly. So the criteria could include, or usually includes, in an SBE type of program is the personal net worth of the company to identify whether they're small, and then also the primary location of that small business as well. So again, you could design the small business program to be the 16 counties, or you can design that program to be just the Hampton Roads area, or you can design that program to be the city of Portsmouth. And so as we continue to talk through and look at the data, a recommendation of what that program would look like is definitely something that we would discuss further along. So I want to start getting into the different aspects of the procedural manual. So for MWEBE participation, bidders or proposers, and I might use either one of those interchangeably as we're talking, have two options with the new program. Either meet the project-specific goal, not the aspirational goal, it will not be applied to every contract across the board, but actually understanding for the very specific solicitation that you have available, what is the availability of minority women-owned businesses in those 16 counties and independent cities, and what is the cost or the value estimate of that particular solicitation, and calculate a contract-specific goal, which will be different across the board. So a bidder or proposer has the option to either meet whatever that contract goal is with MWEBE participation, or demonstrate good faith effort that they have attempted to do so. And that will be required across the board, and we'll talk later about, well, what happens if there are no goals for a contract? We'll talk about that in a few minutes as well. Only the percentage of work for MWEBE proposers is counted toward the goal of the work that they actually self-perform. So just because, for example, if an MWEBE firm bids on a contract and they are the apparent low bidder, just because they're an MWEBE firm, 100% of that contract is not going to be counted unless they're self-performing all the work. I want to use construction as an example because it's the cleanest analogy to look at this. So you're going to renovate City Hall, and you have floors, paint, ceilings, carpet, coussical tile, I mean, you have all these different trades and scopes. If an MWEBE firm wins that as a general contractor, they're going to hire subcontractors. But that MWEBE firm is the bidder first that happens to be an MWEBE firm. So they are still required to meet the same guidelines and regulations of the MWEBE policies and procedures: outreach, engagement, meeting the goal, or demonstrating good faith. So if that MWEBE general contractor is going to do the flooring, whatever the value of that flooring scope is, is the value that is counted toward the goal, not the entire contract, because they are hiring other firms to come and do some of that work. MWEBE firms also must provide a commercially useful function in the execution of their contract. And that basically means if I am a flooring company, that's what I do. So I can't go and pour concrete. I could if that's in my scope of work and that's something that I do, but if floors is all I do, my commercially useful function is flooring. So we have to be really careful as we're identifying the MWEBE firms that are included on contracts, that they're actually performing a commercially useful function and not being utilized as a front. Self-performance. There are instances, and there are various types of contracts, where a firm can actually self-perform all of the work. There are, but there are also opportunities where a firm that has W-2 employees that are skilled laborers to actually perform the work can claim that they're self-performing. However, if that, in that scope of contract or that scope of work, that firm must lease equipment, buy supplies, they actually have to go out and then do that outreach and engagement for those supplies, for that material, for the leasing of equipment, because those are, again, opportunities. So a firm can say, I'm not hiring any labor because I have my own certified qualified employees to do so. And there may be some instances where the material, for example, may be a sole-source type material, and there are no MWEBE firms to do that, then there would be no participation in that project. But just because a firm is saying, I'm using my own W-2 employees and my own labor, does not remove them from conducting outreach and engagement for other scopes of work that might be in that contract. So utilization plan is an element of the manual as well, and this is primarily for RFPs, RFQs, where you can't really determine what a goal would be because it's the nature of the scope of work. And I like to use disparity studies as an RFP process, and normally, there is a goal attached, some artificial goal, because nobody really knows what that firm is going to subcontract out. But in all fairness, if it is a solicitation and it has no goals, then require the proposer to then come and say, this is how we're going to utilize MWEBEs in our contract, should we be awarded this particular RFP or this contract. That gives the firm the flexibility to identify where there are opportunities for MWEBEs to participate. And so as part of the solicitation requirement, a utilization plan would be one of the deliverables in that proposal that they submit to the city on how they're going to utilize MWEBE firms. And MWEBE utilization plan is an evaluation criteria, like you would have scope, experience, costs, whatever. MWEBE utilization plan is an evaluation criteria as well. So that will assist with all solicitations where possible, and everything that the city procures, there's an opportunity for MWEBE engagement and inclusion there. Good faith efforts. In the manual, there are 10 good faith effort combinations, all of them worth 10 points, and it gives the bidder or the proposer the flexibility to be able to select how they're going to reach out and engage with firms as long as they meet 50 points. So one of the good faith efforts that is in the manual is assisting with financial, providing financial assistance, insurance, et cetera. A firm may have a very good insurance agent that is just willing to help out an MWEBE firm. That could be one of the MWEBE boxes, the good faith effort boxes that they select. As long as the bidder meets the 50 points, they're free to choose whichever of those 10 they can. However, I always like to say however, the solicitation and outreach of MWEBE firms is required. You can't offer anything if you're not outreach to MWEBE firms. You can't offer to assist with bonding. You can't offer to joint venture if you aren't reaching out to MWEBE firms. So that particular GFE is required in the good faith efforts to actually document and show what firms you reached out to and what was the disposition of that outreach and engagement with firms. The apparent low bidder or the negotiated firm that you're going to work with, if it's a professional service or other service contract, must submit their good faith effort documentation when requested. So as we start going out to the community and talking with businesses about what this program is, how it's administered, and what the requirements are, one of the first things that we will say is, even if you meet the goal, or you think you have at the time you bid it anyway, keep your documentation of good faith effort, because if it's needed, it has to be submitted. We wrote into the manual an audit clause stating that firms must keep documentation and all records of the contract that they worked on for the city for a period of five years. If at any point in time there's missing data, particularly if you, when you're ready to conduct your next disparity study, and there's missing data, those firms under contract are being required to maintain that data so that whoever is going to conduct your study can ask for that data for your disparity study. So that is written into the policy as well. Also, there's language in the policy that discusses replacement and termination of MWEBE firms after that firm, after the bidder or the vendor has been awarded the contract. It is not uncommon for firms to identify MWEBE firms, but it's at bid time, but as soon as the contract is signed, those MWEBE firms disappear. So there are liquidated damages built into the program that will actually, or could, assess liquidated damages to a firm that violates the policy and how to do that. If you've seen me and remember anything that I've ever said, when I come to present before you, I always talk about data, so nothing's going to change. I want to talk about data again. We have in the policy different aspects of data that needs to be collected. The data is how you measure the success of your program. It is how you determine whether there are adjustments that are needed to the program and the way that the outreach and engagement is being performed. So there are two aspects of responsible parties for data. I spoke quickly about the audit clause and the contractors or the vendors who actually receive contracts from you needing to maintain that data in case you ask. However, on the front end, in the contract, what we're recommending is that the firms understand that when they submit their monthly invoices, that they must also report what payments they make to all of their subcontractors, of course, within that identifying what MWEBE firms are utilized. And there are several reasons for that. One, so you have the data, you can assess the data and determine the success of where you are in terms of your goals, your aspirational goals, et cetera. But also, to make sure that whatever goal commitment that that firm has in their contract when they bid, that they're actually utilizing those firms when the contract is actually in progress. The city is going to, we're going to be working to try to identify a method and a source to maintain MWEBE status of your contractors, your subcontractors, suppliers, the award amount, the paid amount of the firms, and the type of work that each of those subcontractors are performing. So speaking with Manager Carter, that's one of the first things that we're going to start working on is finding where we keep that data and how we're going to maintain that data. Again, all collectively, this data helps to measure the success of the program and also identify if there are any adjustments to the program that may be needed. And so next steps. Policy and Procedures Manual drafted, ready for review, comments, engagement, and feedback. The first thing is to update solicitation documents with program language. It's very, very important that bidders understand, like you have the scope of work and deliverables in solicitations, that bidders also understand the requirements of bidding with the city of Portsmouth in terms of outreach and engagement for MWEBE success. Establish data collection process and framework. Conduct internal staff training on the guidelines, assisting the staff in understanding the nuances, if you will, of outreach engagement, and also giving them a support mechanism to identify MWEBE firms as they go out to do their day-to-day work. Host a series of business information sessions to inform the business community of the process and making sure that they are aware and that they know. You will be very surprised that when this particular task is done, many businesses are like, oh, we were doing that, we just, we didn't know that's what you wanted to do also. also. So that's always very pleasing to hear. And then establish reporting criteria and timeframes to regularly come back before council and give an update on how the outreach and engagement and the program procedures are being administered throughout the city. And I believe, yep, that is the last slide. So questions?
Dr. Whitaker, you have the floor.
Yes, thank you, Ms. Mitchell. This presentation has been a long time coming, and you have worked with us from the school board days to the city. And hopefully, we can finally get something in place to hold the city accountable for making sure we're providing equity in our contracting. I'm curious, there's some language that the city is seeking. I was, I was hoping that we were going to hear the legislative package, but city manager announced that Ms. Neal is not here. Have you been made aware of the proposed language that we're looking to have the general assembly change or apply to our charter?
I have not.
Okay. Yeah, I think that that would be something, the proposed language that we had regarding the presence of a significant difference and how that creates a compelling government interest, that language, I think that would be language that's important for Ms. Mitchell to see as, as we look at formulating this policy here, because that's, that's going to be in the charter for the city. And so I'm just curious how that would impact what you have here in your policy.
Absolutely.
Yeah. Second, I'm just curious, other cities, other cities have this type of policy in place?
Yes.
And any measure of how effective it has been?
Absolutely. It's funny you should ask, because I'm working on a selected practice, best practice research paper now to actually talk with those agencies. Many agencies report their annual reports or their quarterly reports, some do not, which I don't know why, but those who do not, I'm actually speaking with those administrators to ask if they would share that information with me, because that's exactly what I'm trying to do, is to measure their success. Now, the ones that I am familiar with, who actually share their, their reports and their annual reports online, you can see a progressive uptick in their outreach and solicitation. I think one of the gaps that is happening is the documentation of those bidders. So we talked about in any of your bids, whatever size of, whatever threshold to document that outreach and who bids, is an important measure also to see if the engagement is increasing as well.
Right, because the, the policy is one thing, the enforcement of it, and making sure that the departments are doing what they're supposed to do is another thing. And so I'm, I'm hoping that our city manager will make sure that this is enforced. The other issue is that you have the penalty section. And I'm just curious, the figures that I see, it says, I see this figure, $30,000 that's used as the penalty figure on page 22.
Mm-hmm.
Where is that number derived?
You're in, I'm sorry. If I could speak to that, we worked together in developing the language and the policy. One of the things that legal did with, in collaboration with the manager and with Ms. Mitchell, was to look at the policies that were already in place with the city. And as you're well aware, the school board has a similar policy, and their structure for liquidated damages included a similar format. And so we use that format and then use the index for inflation to look at the dollar amount that would be comparable for what would, those numbers would be today. And so that's how those, that's how that came about.
Yeah, I'm, I'm just concerned that, I don't think $30,000 is going to cause a contractor to take a risk.
Follow the rules.
Yeah. Because they, because they can, that can be built into the cost. And so I don't think that has enough, $30,000 isn't, that's, that's just a smack on the hand, and they're just going to pass that cost in the contract.
Dr. Whitaker, I want to draw your attention to the first paragraph, too. There is a percentage of the contract value that should be present in all of our liquidated damages that goes, I think it's 11% was what the numbers bared out, of the contract value. And so what we have to do, we have to be careful with the language that we use, because the law will void our liquidated damages if we use it for punitive measures. What it's supposed to be, is supposed to be a measure for damages that are hard to conceive, like the loss of a minority contractor that we thought we were going to get to use, that we didn't get to use. Ultimately, it is encouraging them by having this dollar amount to do what's right. That's, that's the overall process. But we have to use it based on, similar to the disparity numbers that will represent reasonable damages that are uneasy, that are unable to be easily determined. And so using the case law and the factors that were presented in those case laws, we came up with these numbers. So we thought 11% of a contract value gave us a significant range. And then the actual 30,000, 20,000, 40,000, I think there's some percentages in there, gave us a little more flexibility for the smaller contracts. So we tried to include a great range to give all of the departments some flexibility, but we can continue to look at that.
Yeah, I was, that's what I was going to ask you in regards to the, I know you mentioned some case law, but is it speaking to specific amounts? Like, what's the difference between 30 and 50 and 30 and 100, you know? So you can get back, but I don't, I don't think that, well, the liquidated damages section and this section here that deals with when contractors fail to do certain things, I'm not clear if that 30,000 is going to be a necessary, an enough penalty, I would say. And so you say you, you can get back, get back with us on that.
And Dr. Whitaker, before you go on, I know you have probably another question. Mr. Carter wanted to add something to that.
Okay.
That part, so if we could, please.
Yes, sir. In that same section, the liquidated, liquidated damages is a avenue, but you know you could actually just terminate the contract also.
Yeah.
You know what I mean? So just depending on what the contract is, you know, it, it may be more, I guess, severe to just terminate the contract than to do the liquidated damages, you know what I mean? So there, there are other avenues built into this, other than just that number associated with liquidated damages, to actually hold people accountable for those things that they're supposed to be doing.
Okay, all right. And the last issue, can you just explain on, you mentioned, you mentioned the small, why, why is this small business coming up in this discussion? I'm not, I'm not clear on that, why that's included in a minority and women policy.
So there should be, and again, legal precedent from disparity studies and programs. There should be some level of race and gender neutral elements
Okay.
to the success of your program. Now, one of the things that we have found is that small business programs, if implemented and administered correctly, can be more successful in increasing minority women on business participation than the MWBE program in and of itself, particularly if you have, let's say that it's, it's decided that there are going to be some targeted solicitations where just your small businesses compete for, the likelihood of having more MWBE firms within that, those 10 businesses is greater, right? Because you cannot target or quote unquote, set aside solicitations just for MWBE firms, cannot do that. So the small business program gives you various elements of engagement without being race and gender-based types of program elements.
Okay. And so that's why that language that I was speaking of earlier about what we're looking to get added into the charter.
Okay.
That language speaks to, I believe, race-conscious, some race-conscious remedies. And so that's why I think that might be something to take a look at.
Yeah, absolutely. Would love to look at that.
All right. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Vice Mayor Lucas Burke, ma'am, you have the floor.
Thank you, mayor. Thank you, Ms. Mitchell. Good to see you again.
You're welcome.
Glad to get us to this point. I guess we never thought that from our prior discussions that we would get this, to this point, but glad that we're here. And looking at the definitions, I was just trying to find something for P cards, just a little bit more clarity on what P cards are.
The procurement cards?
Yes. So the procurement cards, okay, well, then that is the user that you say it should make every effort to purchase from the minority women business opportunities.
Absolutely. And your P card policy and process and guidelines are in your purchasing policy.
Okay, that, I think that's what I was following with that. Okay, and the policy that we have, I know it's going to be training for staff and the, probably council, we have our packet as well, but will the people who are applying, some of the businesses, have access to this too, or so that they know?
The manual itself?
Yes.
It would be my recommendation that once it's finalized and approved, that it is posted on the website as well, so that anyone can read it. And the language that would go into, because the, the language that would go into your solicitation is going to be abbreviated, but it will refer back to the policy for more clarification and explanation.
Exactly. And then just one final question about the entire process, and I know that there are fees and fines and penalties if they don't comply, or if they don't, you know, follow good faith efforts. But what happens if, because I've seen this happen before, a business may bring on a minority contractor to do a portion of the work, but they only do that for the application part of it, and then within two weeks or 30 days, they're excused or released. So how is that factored into the compliance, the good faith effort, all of the other processes that make it work?
That's an excellent question. So the good faith effort happens on the front end when you're putting, when you're preparing your bid to submit. If the, when, once the contractor wins, whatever firms, MWBE firms that they listed in their bid as committed now becomes utilized on this side. And so the compliance piece is extremely important to the success of a program, to have people in place to actually know what's happening. So that would be, it could be the project managers in the department knowing that Vernetta Mitchell was supposed to write a strategic plan, but somebody else wrote the strategic plan. Like, okay, so where, where's the portion of work that Vernetta was supposed to do? So that kind of compliance. The other way to find out if the firms are working, because every month, a firm will not, and that, I know that's really strong language, attorney, Attorney Graham Williams, but a firm will not and should not be paid unless that payment record is there, and then there, to MWBE firms. So that's another telltale sign that something's not happening. The other piece is that we're going to hopefully employ to MWBE firms that if they all of a sudden are not getting the response that they need from the prime that they're working with, to immediately contact the office. And so what sometimes happened is the, so very familiar with the, with the construction background, you have a construction project that's 18 months long, and the MWBE firm that is supposed to do a particular scope of work comes on six, is supposed to come in six months later. So around the six-month period, that compliance officer is starting to look for, in the schedule of values, where that firm is beginning to do their work. And if they're not, then questions are asked, where is so-and-so? Or, or I am calling the MWBE firm and saying, when are you starting work? I've been trying to call the GC for three months and he's never, he or she has never returned my call. Then I'm calling the GC and saying, what's, what's the issue? So that compliance and that communication and that, that conversation is extremely important in ensuring that firms don't just get dropped off the project without due cause. And there are some reasons.
Yeah, yeah.
It, it could be the project's 18 months long, and by the time this MWBE firm comes to their scope of work, they don't have the bandwidth and they ask to be removed. That's a totally different conversation than just being dropped without, without knowing. So the compliance component of the, the program and the contracts is a crucial one to making sure that everyone is following the guidelines.
Thank you for that.
You're welcome.
Councilman Hugel, sir, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Hello.
Ms. Mitchell, nice to see you again. Appreciate you coming to the Economic Development Authority and, and talking with those folks recently. Several questions about what's, what's in the proposed manual regarding aspirational goals. So the, the table that's in here, and I'll just use the first line in the table, construction 10%. So I assume the 10% is, we're going to put in a construction contract that we would like the prime contractor to aspire to achieve 10% of total contract value to MWBE effort. Is, is that what the 10% means?
It, it does not.
Okay.
So the, the, each contract is treated differently, and each contract should have a goal calculated based on the scope, the value, and the availability of MWBE firms in your relevant geographic. So that's, that is a process that happens before that solicitation hits the street to look at each one. That 10% aspirational goal says that there's enough availability based on the disparity study, that if the outreach and engagement is conducted successfully, the city, for all of your contracts across the board, once you tally up all of the participation, should hit 10% collectively. So that's a citywide aspirational goal. And let's say, excuse me, you have a $25,000 refresh or painting that you're going to do, and you outreach to MWBE firms as well as other painters in the marketplace, and the MWBE firm wins, that's a direct contract, and that total also counts, you didn't set a goal on that. Just that outreach effort actually gave that firm an opportunity to bid, and they were the apparent low bidder and won. So that $25,000 contract goes into the pool of all your other construction contracts for the city overall to achieve, to try to meet the aspirational 10% goal.
Okay, so that leads into my second question, because there, there's language in here about project-by-project
Mm-hmm.
goals, which seems to me to be unfair. Why, why would we set a different goal in one construction contract from another when the goal is to get to 10% utilization across the construction market? And presumably, the capacity, the 10% capacity, based on the census that you performed as part of the disparity study, exists in the Virginia Beach, Norfolk, Newport News area, yes?
Okay. Great question.
Yeah.
So what happens if you apply 10% across the board when you could have actually achieved on a specific contract 25?
Well, so I guess, you, you.
So that, the, the other.
I know, you, you end up.
Missing out on 15% participation. Yeah.
Perhaps, but if the capacity's out there, then maybe you get that 15% anyway. I mean, so who decides, we're going to set 25% on one contract and 5% on another?
There is a formula that is utilized in the industry from USDOT that calculates those goals. And there's very, various variables in the goal. One is the scope of work, the estimated value of each of those scopes of work, and the availability of firms that perform those scopes of work. So if you have, let's take the renovation project that I talked about for City Hall. If you have that renovation project that has every element of work in it, except for site work, foundation, steel, roofing, those are additional. So your City Hall project, your availability and the scope of work and the estimated value is very different than if you're doing a new build. And so you look at each project in its own merit to determine what the goal should be based on the scope and the availability of firms. And you may find that the renovation project has a higher goal than the new build. And you may find that the renovation project has a higher goal than the new build, because there aren't very minority firms who provide, well, I don't think there are any, that provide the steel. And that could be a third of the cost of the project. So those goals vary from project to project for that reason.
Okay, and, and so there is a formula that our procurement folks will use to determine. It's not a capricious arbitrary, we're going to throw spaghetti on the wall and, and pick a number.
That's correct.
Okay.
That's correct.
So in the, in the document that, that I saw, in the definitions, there, there's included definitions for service-disabled veterans and service-disabled veteran-owned businesses, but there's no mention of service-disabled anything anyplace else in the document. Is that definitions that weren't necessary, or is it our intention to include service-disabled veterans in this effort?
And I think that's a conversation we're going to need to have, because I did hear that conversation earlier during one of my presentations about service-disabled veterans. It is race and gender neutral, so it is another element that you could utilize as race and gender neutral as well. So we'll go back and flesh out more about what that looks like in this program.
Okay. And then in the, the good faith effort section of the document, it mentions that low price shouldn't be the only criteria used for deciding the award. But it doesn't mention a threshold for how much premium we should be willing to accept to award to an MWBE effort that doesn't produce the low price. So seems like that's a whole, because again, you know, if we're trying to, to set the bar, there's, there doesn't appear there's any bar set.
I'm not familiar to where that part, can you, can you help me find that?
Yep.
I can try to see what that says.
Page 17 of the document, it's paragraphs seven of the GFE criteria. Says receipt of a lower quotation from a non-MWBE will not in itself excuse a contractor's failure to meet contract goals. So it suggests that low price shouldn't be the only criteria used for deciding how to make the award to contractors or subcontractors.
What section was that?
Page 17, it's in the GFE section, the 10 criteria for good faith effort, and it's item number seven out of 10. So while you're reading that on...
Yes.
A comment for the city manager, so... This kind of comes back to, to the questions that Dr. Whitaker was asking. So at, at some point, we're going to get history on contractors fulfilling or not fulfilling aspirational goals. Do we have a mechanism to keep past performance on procurement so that when it comes time to review the next RFP, if contractor A submits a bid and we have past performance that shows he has never met, come close to any aspirational goal despite his good faith effort? And contractor B has always met their aspirational goals, it'd be helpful if we had a past performance. And I don't see any, any mention in the data collection that talks to gathering past performance.
Manager Carter, you have the floor, sir.
Yes, sir. In, in our procurement system right now, there, we're actually looking at, trying to make sure we develop all the user-defined fields necessary to capture the information so that we can do the reporting automatically. Right now, we can define, you know, what those firms are. Are they minority business, or women-owned business, or service-owned business, or, we, we have fields for all those things. We're going to have to develop, as we start looking at what, what we're going to use as criteria, we're going to have to develop those, and we're calling, they're called user-defined fields. We determine what we want to put in those fields, and that will be one of the things that we have to, to capture, so that as we start evaluating businesses going forward, we have a criteria set. But yes, we do have a mechanism that can do that.
Okay, thanks. And so back to the low price question.
So what this good faith effort is saying to a bidder is that just saying that you have a non-MWBE firm that has a lower price in and of itself, just stating that, is not enough to say that you've met that good faith. So the conversation that would happen with that individual or that business, if they're doing the good faith, if they have selected that as their good faith effort, is, other than price, what other, you know, qualifications or skill sets did that MWBE firm not have? So what it does is it prevents a firm from just using the excuse that, oh, I got another low price, and it also has a firm think twice about bid shopping.
Okay, so, so I'll go back to my comment. There's nothing in here that kind of sets the threshold for how much premium we should allow...
There should not be a premium.
Well, I mean, if, 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 if they're not necessarily awarding to low price in order to award to an MWBE, there will be a premium.
So there should not be a premium, and firms who utilize, MWBE firms do not, or, excuse me, firms that utilize subcontractors do not always select the lowest price that they receive. It is a couple things that they think through. They think through skill set, they think through qualification, they think through the timeframe or the schedule that that firm can produce whatever deliverable it is that they receive, and cost is also one of those factors. So just because a firm is, you know, giving you a price that is the lowest responsible responsive bidder, does not mean that all their subcontractors are the lowest bidder in all of the bids that they received. That's just not how that works. So for a firm to say that it's going to cost me more money just to use MWBEs is not true either, because MWBE firms are competitive in the marketplace.
Right.
And if they aren't the lowest, and that could be true, then are there other skill sets that they also could not meet for that, for that same reason?
Okay. I, I, I'm not done with this one yet, but...
That's okay.
I, I'll give it up for now. Thanks, Mayor.
You're welcome, sir. And I'd like to ask, turn the floor over to Attorney Graham Williams. She had a specific question or comment, and then we'll move on with Councilman Tillage. Ma'am, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted, we had talked about Councilman Hugel at, at the E D A presentation, that Ms. Mitchell was present for the reason why veterans were not included in the policy, is because when we, when we requested the disparity study, it was not part of the subset of individuals for which we had data. And so because we didn't have those numbers or the data sets to support race-based and gender-based policies, we did not include it in this policy language. However, as Ms. Mitchell has alluded to, we can include it as part of our gender and race-neutral policies, which is going to be necessary for our policy to survive the strict scrutiny that race and gender neutral will receive from the courts. And so there is a place for it in the policy, it's just not as the primary of goals, aspirational goals of the city. Also, you'll note in that section where you refer to aspirational goals, that is a goal acceptable only to the city. And so we are, we are very specific in the fact that our contractors are not giving just aspirational goals, thus the liquidated damages and things of that nature. That is only for the city's projected compliance with the disparity, and there has to be a nexus between the two, and so that also feeds into the numbers that are presented. Thank you.
Okay, so for, as a follow-on to that, then, when we issue a request for a proposal, let's say there's no aspirational goal referred to in that?
Yep.
And so it's up to the, the responders to, to decide how much MWBE content they want to bid into their proposal?
I'm going to defer the semantics of that to Ms., Ms. Mitchell, that's beyond the law. But what I can tell you is, for it to survive judicial scrutiny, it has to be aligned with the data that comes from the disparity study, and so it has to be narrowly tailored. The disparity itself is the governmental interest. The second part of that analysis, though, is the narrow tailoring, and that's where the numbers from the data dictate what the goals will be for the city. I'll, I'll leave the processes to, to Ms. Mitchell to answer that.
Okay.
That's correct. So just a reminder, firms have, all bidders, all proposers have one of two options, or actually, they have three. Option number one, meet the goal, if they're able to actually meet the goal with committed participation. Second is if they can't meet the goal, then demonstrate that they tried. And that will happen, because MWBE availability, they may, everyone's wanting them to work on their projects so they can meet goals, so they may not have the bandwidth. They may not want to work on that particular type of project. So a proposer or bidder has the opportunity to demonstrate, I did meet the goal in whole or in part, but I did do everything that I possibly could within the program to do so. And the third is to provide that utilization plan, where we do not have a goal, that you tell us how you plan to utilize MWBE firms, be creative. One of the things that, as a disparity study consultant, when we would get RFPs and submit all of our solicitation, there were certain areas that we knew we were going to have local participation, we were going to have someone help us with anecdotal, talking with businesses because they are in the area. And then one of the things that we, that, we started being creative with was firms actually helping us make, collect some of the data. That's something that we generally would do in-house, but we started being more creative to do that. So we use that flexibility of how we were going to deliver the disparity study to you in identifying what participation we want to have, because we knew it was important to the city to have that participation.
Okay, I'm tracking with you, but kind of coming back to your earlier answer, the procurement folks have a formula to figure out what the aspirational goal should be for contract X. I think I heard the city attorney say, but we don't tell the bidders what that aspirational goal is.
No, that's two different things. Yeah, that's, that's two different things. So the city's aspira, these goals are the city's measurement of how well our program worked. If we do everything that we, we set, set out to do in terms of outreach and engagement, and we have more MWBE firms bid, and more who are actually awarded contracts, this is your measurement of how well you're doing. The contracts that you let have very different goals, not these. Some of them could calculate to this, but they're very different goals, in which the narrowly tailoring part that Attorney Graham Williams is talking about, is that you must narrowly tailor your program to where the disparity exists. So let's say, for example, you just pull a number out the air and 16 percent on every goal, on every contract. You may not have 16 percent availability, you may not have 16, you may not even have the scope of work to calculate that. So you are forcing companies to try to meet an artificial goal versus something that is calculated based on exactly what they're going to be doing. So the two are, are two different things. These are yours, and the contract-by-contract goals vary based on the scope and the costs and availability.
And that's the MWBE goal?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, you're welcome.
Councilman Tillage, sir, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. Ms. Mitchell, thank you for your, your presentation. When we speak about P-cards, of course, it's very hard to kind of regulate as far as people spending the P-card, right? However, would it be common practice for a locality to have, for example, pre-approved vendors that would be like on an online portal? So you would have a vendor for, let's say, t-shirts, or a vendor for other swag items or office needs, that the employee would be able to access via an online portal of pre-approved vendors, and then still use their P-card as the first resort? And if those items, if they still need to go beyond, that could also be their attempt to, their attempt to find MWBE first, exactly, and then go to the next resort if that, if their needs can't be found there.
That's correct. And, and that's absolutely a great idea. I've seen a couple jurisdictions do that, where they have approved vendors for swag, office supplies, t-shirts, usually, most people who sell swag sells t-shirts, but, you know, any of those types of common things that you procure, to have a list of firms, you can have four, five, six, and the other process behind that is, and that could be anyone, four, five, or six on there, then rotate those firms. So every time, if firm A went, gets the first purchase with that P-card, they go to the bottom of the list and firm B pops up. And so then the city would have the opportunity to utilize all of those firms. Something that's, that is kind of hard to, to regulate at times, the agencies that don't rotate, is that you'll have a pre-qualified vendor list of firms that can do, and this is very common in, in like architectural engineering, and you'll have that same firm who's at the top of the list that the city, like, I like only working with this firm, so the other four never get an opportunity, but they have a work order and never get a contract from it.
Gotcha. All right. And then my next, I guess it's not really too much of a question, but more of a statement. The point that my colleague, Councilman Whitaker, brought up in regards to compliance, you know, when we, I, I see it in the first paragraph it made mention to 11 percent. However, of course, later on, it mentions the 30 percent if using an MWBE as a conduit or commitment. I also have an issue with that as well, because, and I know majority of our contracting or purchasing, most of it is not large, large dollar amounts, right? But when we're speaking about development, and we're, which Portsmouth is on the verge of entering to a lot of development in the future, large developments, $30,000 is, they're going to do that in broken glass, right? And so if a contractor or developer is going to say, okay, I'm going to use X number of MWBEs just to get the contract, knowing they're not going to, that also means that they're going to be willing to budget for $30,000 to do it. But I mean, let's face it, if you have a million-dollar contract, $30,000 is 3 percent. 3 percent of a million dollars is chump change. And so I really would like for us to look into making that larger. I understand that 30,000 is good for smaller contracts, but when we're speaking about waterfront development, when we're speaking about possibility of building a new school, possibility of a new police academy, that's more than a million-dollar contract.
That's where the 11 percent would come in. I want to just, we can definitely look into this, for sure, this is more discussion, because you could do it based on points that, you know, the negation of points that they would have gotten, you could, you could add a dollar amount to that. The difficulty is two things. So you have to remember that liquidated damages are for, are not punitive, the law dictates that. So we, we can't say it's not, it's not big enough to punish them, but we can say it's not large enough to compensate for the damages for the loss of those minority businesses or women-owned businesses that we would not be able to work, would not have been able to work with. So we, we have to sort of be creative, because it needs to fit in a policy across all contracts. And so the 11 percent is contract value. So your $1 million question, that would come into play. 11 percent of $1 million is pretty significant. If it's a small dollar contract, the 5 percent would come into play. And so you, you have these options to play with, but we can, we can continue to discuss this, but I want us to be using the right language, because what we say up here will be used against us in court.
Most definitely.
And so we want to make sure that we are evaluating based on what we believe would be reasonable damages for the loss based on the various things that happen. So we have clauses for, you know, telling us untruths, you know, replacing a minority business person. So there, we try to look at what the damages as a collective would be based on cases in our...
So there, we tried to look at what the damages as a collective would be based on cases in our, because we're limited to our jurisdiction, we can't look at New York and see what those contracts would do. And we looked at it in a sense that what would be what courts are giving under the circumstances for large, small, or that medium. And so that's where the numbers, I know 30,000 pops up first because it's in a paragraph, so we tried to play around with position. But we can, again, that number is something that's flexible, or we can get rid of the number and do a percentage based on the loss of points. So there's some options, and I'll present that to you at a work session.
Thank you, and I look forward to that, because I think it's really important that we do
Absolutely.
get, as you said, creative in creating this policy, because at the end of the day, your large minority hubs such as Atlanta were not built from mediocre policy.
Absolutely.
And so we have to make intentional efforts to ensure that Portsmouth raises the bar not only for Hampton Roads, but for the Commonwealth.
Absolutely. And we put in a severability clause so that the hard work that we put into this report lasts, should something be ruled unconstitutional or otherwise. But let's make a good faith effort in the beginning to have this solid full document that would survive scrutiny. Thank you.
Councilwoman Moody, sir, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor, and good evening, Ms. Mitchell.
Good evening.
Good to see you again.
Same here.
A lot has been said about compliance, and I've been around a little while, and I know compliance with our city is our Achilles' heel, if you may. So I guess my question is, knowing, and you mentioned that that will be the success of, that will determine the success of reaching those goals. And I guess my question will be to the city manager, who's going to take the lead on the compliance? I know it sounds like it's going to cover a lot of departments, and I would think even perhaps the legal department. So I guess, and this might not be the place to cover that, but if you got to answer tonight, that's great. I'll yield.
Mr. Carter, you have the floor, sir.
Councilman Moody, absolutely. This is something we've already thought about. We realize that culture takes a long time to change. We're in the process right now of, before the responsible person comes on board, having conversations about how we're procuring and how things have to change. We can't keep doing the same thing that we've always done and expect a different result. That just won't happen. And I'm of the mindset that you, you don't expect what you don't inspect. Meaning, once we put these measures in place, we are in the process right now of hiring a person whose responsibility only is to make sure that we're compliant and the contractors are compliant. They, that is their job, 100% of their job. They're not doing something else, they're not helping with some other project. Their only goal is to make sure that we're doing what we say we're going to do, and the contractors are doing what they say they're supposed to. So yes, sir, we, I understand compliance is going to be an issue, and it will always be an issue. There will always be someone who's trying not to do. But I would prefer to believe that those who work with us and those who will work for us would want to comply, because that's just what the rule of the land is. And I understand that that won't always be so. That's why we are going to hire somebody to actually keep an eye on. They'll be the ones coming to you making these reports. They'll be the ones making those regular reports to you, hey, this is what we're doing. This is how well we're doing. This is how, maybe we're not doing so well. These are the things where we need to adjust. Be working with the attorney's office and myself to keep a track of what's happening. So if adjustments needs to be made, then we make adjustments. But there is a person whose 100% job is this.
Very good. Have a few more questions to, in the case of an emergency. And I think this touches on, I think Councilman Hugel mentioned that, about building a database, if you may, of vendors who have a record of complying. As we know, in the case of an emergency, a hurricane, for example, God forbid, a fire somewhere where the city has to take emergency action, I think that database is going to be extremely important. And I guess my question to our attorney too, is there language to not, I don't know, suspend the process is the proper language that you probably want to hear? But do we have a fallback in the case of those emergencies like that?
Thank you, Councilman Moody, yes, we do. We have what's called a state of emergency. And so that is what we use oftentimes when a hurricane comes or there's a fire that devastates or takes on a large portion of our responsive teams to those issues. And so this city and the manager is familiar with the execution of that. It's in our Virginia code, and we would use that to suspend. It does a number of things. Not only does it bring funds to the jurisdiction from the state and other localities, but it also suspends procurement requirements and allows us to work more streamlined to secure the things that would be needed. It would also still be good in the policy, though, if we have a plan for how we will continue to honor this policy even in light of the procurement terms being lifted. And so we would, I think that could be something that we could work on in our emergency planning to enable that. So there is, there is that provision. Thank you.
And that's, if I may, that's a very good point, because in an emergency situation, you would just go where you need to go and get it done. So like the city attorney said, the emergencies are exempt from the procurement processes, right? So no goal setting, sending out a solicitation, you're on the phone trying to find someone to get the water out of this building. What I have seen and have worked with before is a tornado district and received a phone call from the facilities manager saying, find me as many firms who can do demo, go in and clean up and all the other stuff. And so not only was I looking for M W B E firms to assist in that natural disaster, we were also finding anyone who did that. And at that point in time, they just needed bodies. That particular project ended up with like 40% minority participation just by picking up the phone and including them in that process of being able to come and do the demo, do the flood restoration and all of the other things so that they can get their lives back on track after that tornado.
Great. My other question, since the school board and school system has been on M W B E policies and procedures, is there something that we can glean from that? I guess that, my question to the manager is, have we been in communication so, to avoid any pitfalls that they may have encountered so we don't repeat those? And could you expound on that, Mr. Manager?
Yes, sir, I've actually had conversations with their M W B E coordinator. Kind of give me some ideas of what we need to do, some of the things that they've done, some of the successes, some of the failures that they've had. Matter of fact, we've participated, we've helped fund some of the things that they're doing in their program. So I envision this as a collaborative and not two separate things. One of the things that I think a program like this does is build capacity not just to do business with us, but to do business, period. So as we're looking at doing the education and outreach piece of this, the focus is not just on, hey, just come do business with the city, but let's get you in position to do business, period. And that's one of the things that she's working on, that's one of the things that will be required of the position that we hire. And I think it's incumbent upon us just as a city not to do, to ask everybody to come and do business with us, but help them put the processes in place, put the best business practices in place so that they can just do business, period. So to answer your question shortly, yes, I've already been in contact with her. But for the long term, I think that's a collaborative effort, not just individual things.
Very good, thank you. Thank you, Ms. Mitchell.
You're very welcome.
Dr. Whitaker, you have the floor.
Yes, this is for the city attorney. The language that we were speaking to on page 21, the liquidated damages, the, next to the last paragraph where it mentions the contractor for degrees that for each specified violation. Can you, when you follow up with us, specified violations, is that referring to A through, A through G on the next page, page 21? When it speaks about specified violations, is that referring to the specified violations on A through G? Or is that something else? And?
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, I'll get back to you.
Okay.
I believe so, but let me, let me look into it to be sure.
Right.
It's, I think, yes, I will get back to you.
Okay, because if, yeah, because if it is, that puts that 11% issue in a different context too with this 30,000 that's listed in A through G. The loss that you were speaking about, that liquidated damages would have to take account for, can you get, when you get back with us, when you, when you speak of the loss of minority contractors, are you just speaking to a loss just within that contract negotiation or transaction? Or are you speaking to a aggregate loss that because the city has done business in this way, these are losses that we have incurred? So I'm just curious, when you say how we're measuring loss, so that it's not being punitive, but looking at what has happened over a period of time versus just this transaction? That's, just want to make sure.
There absolutely is a historical basis to damages and how you evaluate them. The fact that it is hard to quantify is what allows us to be able to put liquidated damages in, in, in the first place, because it sort of is a, an agreed-upon pre-evaluation that everybody says we will agree to. And so, so yes, there is room for the historical value of the loss in that analysis.
Yeah.
And oftentimes, that would be what would be relied on to defend that, because you could end up in court.
Yeah, so I'm of the mindset to, this, this has to be an aggressive number.
Okay.
There's a culture here that has existed and it has become common practice. We've had two disparity studies, and the first one was ignored because of the culture. And so you can't expect now for to just tap these, the greed and the money and the power that's in it. You have to send a message, and I agree with Mr. Tillage that we have some major projects on this waterfront, and these little figures up here is not going to discourage discrimination.
Absolutely. One of the things that makes this a balancing act is, one, the policies have to be consistent.
Yes.
And so we start with the school board's policies, and these numbers come from that. And so we would have, we would, as a collaborative effort, as the manager was speaking, we would have to revisit that as well. But more importantly, to your, to your point, is the idea of where we put the consequence of the type of factors that you described. It may not be in the liquidated damages, because liquidated damages, again, cannot be punitive. But it could be in other provisions, and so I think we need to expand our view at how we look at that.
Yeah.
The other part, and this is where Ms. Mitchell came in on E D A and helped us out tremendously, is each contracts, each type of contracting mechanism is different. So development, you have a different bargaining position. It's not like you have the ability to sort of have a pot of money or a set of goods and services. Depending on the leverage value that the city would have with the person that you're contracting with dictates how effective that measure you're describing is. And so I want to be able to add that to the evaluation without taking away anything from what you're, what you're proposing.
Yeah, I just want to make sure that the tone of this is not something that's going to be accommodating to these contractors.
Oh, nothing.
That they know that
Right, no, absolutely not.
if you violate this
Right.
there's significant consequence. And so I hope that's the tone that we put forward, because
Yes, sir.
the culture's been in place too long. My, I did have another question, and it may have been answered, but I didn't hear. The process for gathering the data that Ms. Mitchell refers to collecting, where are we in that process? And how long will it take for the capacity of the city to be in place, the system, to capture this data?
Mr. Carter, sir, you have the floor.
Councilman Whitaker, the really good thing about where we are right now, we have a system through Tyler Technologies called Munis, which has capabilities of already doing the things that we need to gather the data. We, when I look at what the data set is right now, we've gathered some of the data, but we just wasn't consistent in gathering the data. So it wasn't, it wasn't a system problem, it was an us problem.
Yeah.
So
Okay.
so the fix is not, hey, we need a new system. We got systems.
Okay.
They already have all the fields necessary for us to gather the information.
Okay.
We just need to be more persistent in doing so.
With Munis, okay. And when you mentioned it's going to be this one person, this, what kind of, can you let council know about the staff that's going to be in this office, how this is going to be staffed? Because you're looking at contracts at the P card level, all the way up to capital improvement. So that's, that's a very expansive number of contracts that we're involved in.
Well, initially, there's only one person set. And the reason there's only one person set, because we're building the office. As we figure out what we need and when we need them, that's when we'll start trying to add more people on. The one thing that I don't want to do is hire for that person. Meaning, if I'm going to hire somebody and then hire their staff also, I would prefer that they're, they're able to hire their own staff.
Well, no, I'm not saying hire them, I'm saying the structure of it. Is there a structure in place that that person, when they come in, that there may be some need that they would need to hire and they would have that capacity to do it?
Yes, what, that's what I'm saying. Once they evaluate what is necessary, right now, the biggest thing we need right now is education. Okay. Educating us, educating the contractors that we're going to be dealing with. So that's the biggest piece right now. So as the person that is selected, come on board, evaluate what's necessary. It's hard for me to really predict what the workload is going to be until there's somebody doing the work. And then they can say, all right, Steve, this is much more than I had anticipated. I need a person to do, I need an admin, I need a, another manager, I need a whatever. We'll evaluate those things together, and as, as the necessity dictates, we'll build out that way. I prefer to go that route versus just sending a group of people and, and, but let me say this also. That may be one person that's responsible for it, but we as a city is responsible for making sure that we help them with it. They're, they're looking for compliance and education, but they're not actually the ones that's putting contracts in place. They're not the ones that's doing that kind of work. So all of the departments that are doing that work, they're part of this team also. So it's not a one-person team.
Yeah. So do you have an idea of the volume, the number of contracts that the city is involved in on an annual basis?
I can get that number for you, because one of the things I've done is inserted myself in that contract process. Every contract, matter of fact, every purchase is coming through my office now. Because one of, one of the things I thought was, the quickest way to find out what a city's doing is look at the way it spends its money.
Okay.
And so I inserted myself in that process, so all those things are coming through me right now. So I'm getting a good feel for who we're doing business with, who we're repeatedly doing business with, how we're doing business, some of the things that, that this particular study will, have already identified. I'm seeing some of those things myself, because again, I've inserted myself in that purchasing process. So I have a good idea of what that is.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, and I think that was a very robust conversation. And one thing, before you step down, Ms. Mitchell, I did want to say to you, I too am excited about the process. I'm excited about the work that you and your firm has performed on the city's behalf. I'm also excited about the fact that we are moving forward to identify and bring on an administrator and a compliance officer, meaning that we are not just talking, we are committed as a city. And the commitment, albeit the past hasn't determined what we had intended, I assure you, under the leadership of this team, we will move forward. you, under the leadership of this team, uh, we will move forward, and we expect that you will always be there to help us through this part of the program. But the most important thing, I think, from a city's perspective, and I'm not speaking on behalf of my cli, my, my colleagues, I am a minority-owned business, and I am SWAM certified, and I compete for contracts every day, and I understand the processes that go into this. And I am all for us as a city being fair and equitable in how we procure dollars to all of our citizens and to all of our businesses to compete. With that being said, thank you, ma'am, for your professionalism and for your timely reporting. It is appreciated.
It is my pleasure, and thank you for the opportunity to work with the city again. I'm looking forward to, um, our time together over the next several months.
Thank you again.
Thank you.
Mr. Carter, you have the floor, sir.
Thank you again, Ms. Mitchell. I really appreciate the work that you've done, uh, to get us to this point. Uh, I am too excited that, uh, we're actually putting feet on this process this time. Uh, Dr. Whitaker mentioned that. There was a previous, um, disparity study, that kind of just, I guess, it got set on the shelf, uh, but we're not doing that with this one. We're actually moving this process forward, and, and it looks like I have the support of this group to actually get something done, and, and that matters
Yes.
when we're trying to move this process forward. So, uh, thank you again for helping us through this. I really appreciate you being with us tonight.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
That concludes the, uh, presentation that we had prepared for you tonight. Remember, we did have an additional one for Ms. Neal, but she's not able to make it with us this, this evening. So, that concludes the things that I have for you this evening. Thank you for your participation, and thank you for the robust conversation that we've had about this.
Do we have any council liaison reports at this time? Seeing none, that concludes our public work session for today. This meeting is adjourned, and we will reconvene at 7:00 PM for our regular council meeting. Thank you.